I'd like to call the order of the regular city council meeting of Monday, October 11th, 2010 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here, council members Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Riley.
Okay, if you'd all please stand for invocation speaker, Dr. Tom Butler. Welcome. Pastor, will you bow with me for a time of prayer? We ask your blessing upon each member of the city council as they convene for their regular meeting today. We ask that they be given a clear mind and an attentive ear, that they may be able to hear what the citizens are needing to share and may think their response through carefully and make their decisions wisely. We ask your blessing upon the city of Sparks and upon all of its citizens. We ask that you make our time together a time of building of community, for we ask it in your name. Amen. And just for the record, Dr. Butler is with the Sparks United Methodist Church, so thank you. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Riley, since you're not here very often, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sir, I'm here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no comment cards. Anyone from the public want to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Anyone who want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Salerno.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes, regular meeting minutes of September 27th, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith? I didn't see who put it up there, I'm sorry. Mr. Salerno.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is announcements, presentations, recognition items. We have a proclamation for Lights On After School. Is there anyone here to receive that? Tracy? Thanks, Tracy. You've been through this before, haven't you? Okay. Whereas in America today, 15.1 million children are alone and unsupervised after school. And whereas Lights On After School is a project of the After School Alliance, a nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring that all children have access to quality, affordable after-school programs. And whereas Lights On After School is a program that works to keep kids safe, help working families, and improve students' academic achievement to give them the tools to become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School is celebrated at local events throughout the nation and around the globe. And whereas with more than 7,500 communities spanning all 50 states expected to participate in Lights On After School, educators and community members across the country are ensuring the safety and scholastic achievement of our young people. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 21st, 2010, Lights On After School Day and join with the city council in congratulating the Lights On After School program for enriching local students throughout the extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Martini. I would just like to extend my congratulations to our staff who makes this program happen. We have services at 15 school sites currently with over 800 children a day, and this program is very, very important to them. So without that, I don't know, these kids would be unsupervised at home.
That's a very good program. I know my stepson was in it when he was at Sepulveda and went in in the mornings and stayed in the afternoons. The councilors and staff are great to be around and wonderful people, so thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it. Okay, next is consent items, 5.1 through 5.4. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.4.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the consent items as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. General business, 6.1, consideration and possible approval, acceptance of $3,000 total sponsorship from six sponsors for the 2010 Arts and Bloom event. Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Recreation Superintendent. I'm sorry for the delay on this one. I didn't realize I didn't come to you with this. Arts and Bloom was on Mother's Day, as you know. It was a successful event despite the weather we had that day, but we did receive $3,000 in sponsorship. And I'd like to acknowledge our title sponsor, which was State Farm Insurance. And then we received support from supporting sponsors, Biggest Little Cake Shop, Independent Power Corporation, Nevada Neighbors, Sparks Family Dentistry, and Sounds Great, DirecTV. We also had several InKind, which is always a tremendous help and saves on our expenses, Camelot, Jonas Guadis Nugget, KTVN Channel 2, PCS Audio, Playful Potter, excuse me, Reno News and Review, Reno Radio Reps, and the UPS Store. InKind contributions did total almost $12,000. So that's a huge help.
It is. Questions for Tracy? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.1. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is 6.2, consideration and possible approval, acceptance of $39,000 total sponsorship from 19 sponsors for the 2010 Sparks Hometown Farmers Market event. Tracy, go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, in our endeavor to make our events cost covering, staff does a great job bringing in these revenues. We don't have a lot of big title sponsors anymore due to the economy, but that just challenges staff to go out and get many more smaller sponsors. So the list is a little long, but our major sponsors for Hometown Farmers Market was D's Things and Swire Coca-Cola. Our full sponsors, which were at $2,500 each, were Career College of Northern Nevada, Clark Pest Control, Fight Capital, Milan Institute, Nevada Neighbors, Remax Realty Affiliates, Travel Unlimited, Two Brothers Communications, and West Corporation. And then to be a little more flexible in the sponsorship packages, we do allow the options of being a sponsor for that week, whatever they could afford, how many weeks. And those were auctions by Sammy B., Big Paws, Independent Power Corporation, Labor Finders, Marinello Schools of Beauty, Solar Universe, Sparks Family Dentistry, and Tower Two. InKind, which totaled almost $26,000, included Americom, Citadel, and Wilks Radio, Charter Communications, Reno News and Review, Sierra Electronics, and that was it. Sorry, $26,000 in Kind.
Okay, questions for Tracy? It's a great response from people and InKind and money and everything. It enables us to keep going with those special events.
It's tough, though.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve that we accept the $39,000 from 19 sponsors for the 2010 Sparks Hometown Farmers Market.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next is 6.3, review and possible approval of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant as entered into and secured through collaborative efforts with Lincoln Park, Alice Maxwell, Robert Mitchell, Agnes Rizley, and Kate Smith Elementary Schools. Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, this is an annual agreement that is definitely a win-win for the kids in our community. For those schools that qualify for the 21st Century grant, we come in as a services provider at currently five schools. And we offer staffing for the after-school activities at these five schools, and those schools include Lincoln Park Elementary, Alice Maxwell, Robert Mitchell, Kate Smith, and Agnes Rizley. Agnes Rizley was the first one. We've been there a long time, and they're in their second five-year contract, and we started with them. They were the first school to go with the 21st Century, so we've been with them since it started. And basically, what the grant does is it reimburses us for our staff's salaries.
Great. Questions? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Tracy, just wanted to make sure that, does it reimburse us for all of our cost for these programs?
No, at these five sites, it just reimburses the staff's salary, not the benefits or anything else. It's just the salary. We do not have any budget or costs that go into supplies. The schools do supply that.
So we have a cost associated with this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and how much is that?
We do not exceed the amount of the grant, the 39... Sorry.
Looks to be about $90,000, $85,000 total grant cost that we're receiving. Let's see, I saw it in here, it was $85,000. Yes, $85,000 is what we receive. What is our cost to provide that service?
Oh, I'm... Boy, I'm... Just guesstimating, maybe 90?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other questions? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to accept and approve the 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant as entered into and secured through collaborative efforts with Alice Maxwell, Robert Mitchell, Lincoln Park, Agnes Rizley, and Kate Smith Elementary Schools, August 30th, 2010 through June 8th, 2011.
Mr. Salerno.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve agenda item 6.3 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.4. Thanks, Tracy.
You know, I just realized on the cover sheet, the wrong amount is on there. Is that why you were questioning that? Because what I show on my reservation form is 106,720, and the actual grant amount that you just approved was 85,000. So I don't know, there's a discrepancy there in what I submitted to council.
I show there's five grants, and they range between 15 and 16,000 apiece.
Correct, okay.
So...
Which is the 85 total.
85, 106.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, but on this front page, I have 106.
So what did we approve, 85?
85 is correct.
Is that what the grant's supposed to be?
That is what's correct.
Okay. Are we okay, Mr. Riley?
I think you're fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Tracy. 6.4, presentation of the I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design/Build Project. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Jim Gallegos. I'm the project manager for the I-80 Design/Build Project. Today, I'm here to seek your support for the project and to look for your approval for our inter-local funding agreement. I'd like to real quickly run you through a presentation of the project and then answer questions. We'll move on to the next agenda items for the approvals. This project is along I-80 from Rob to Vista, various improvements along the corridor, but basically right through the metropolitan area, Reno and Sparks. A little background on the project, we, Endot's pavement management system, the pavement section we're going to replace here is at the top of the priority list. We did some project scoping and working with Washoe County Freeway Corridor Study Planning Documents to come up with the project recommendations, and did two road safety audits to look at the traffic crashes and safety problems out here along the corridor before we came up with the scope of the project. Crashes, been about 3,000 in a five-year period between March of '03 and '08, and since then, another 1,200 crashes. So a lot of room for improvement out here to try to improve the safety of this corridor. A lot of these improvements should help with the traffic crashes. We did a benefit cost analysis this last year, evaluated the proposed improvements through the year 2030, applied the crash data and the benefits we expect to receive from that, and then came up with about a four-to-one benefit-cost ratio, which is a pretty good return for our investment.
One second, sir, we got a question.
Okay.
Going back to the asking slide, where do the most of those happen? When they're trying to... When everything comes together, they're trying to go to 395 South or 395 North, is that the spot?
You know, these are spread throughout the corridor, but definitely the clusters are at the interchange areas, at the off-ramps. So you see a lot of rear ends and side swipes in those weaving areas, and I think that's probably the majority of the crashes, rear ends and side swipes at those interchange merge areas.
Do any of the improvements on the I-80 address those?
Yes, we have specific, and I can talk about some of those specifically.
How do we do it?
No, 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 that's fine. We can get into some of the details of that, that'd be great, but these ramp improvements definitely will help with the weaving areas and the auxiliary lanes, so we'll talk about those. I'll make sure I touch on those. This is the basic concept layout. There's 12 basic concepts that we're going to be... Or improvements that will be included in the project. The core in the center there, the yellow area, is the payment replacement, and the largest extent of the investment is for the payment replacement. But we have some corridor-wide improvements and then several concepts at specific locations to address the congestion and the traffic crashes at those locations. So I'll just walk through each one of them fairly quickly. We can stop, answer questions, and/or come back to them. First one's the paving. Concept one, this pavement's been in place since the early '70s. It's one of the last concrete sections in the state to be replaced, and if you've been out there, you've seen some of the condition of the pavement. You know, it's really gone beyond its useful life, so really looking forward to cleaning this section up and having some nice pavement out there. Concepts two and three, ITS infrastructure. This is corridor-wide with the signing and striping improvements. These recommendations, well, the ITS infrastructure is in the regional plan. The signing and striping improvements were recommended through the road safety audit. We've had a lot of projects out throughout the corridor that have come in and built pieces and put new signs in for those areas. There's some inconsistencies out there, and there's new standards, MUTCD standards. We're going to be cleaning all the signs up, improving the text and visibility. There's new font requirements, there's new signing standards that we're going to try to meet and improve with that signing work. The ITS infrastructure will include electronic message boards. You're going to see CCTV cameras out there monitoring the traffic flows, and all this information will be reported to our traffic management center. We're going to put in connection points for each of the local agencies and the RTC so they can tie their infrastructure in in the future. And really, I think we're moving into the 21st century with this ITS and trying to monitor and manage traffic more intelligently based on what's actually happening out on the road versus the studies that we see a lot of times. So this is going to be very valuable for managing traffic as we continue to grow. This is our traffic management center at Endot. Just a slide, we've been working on this northbound 395 project, the widening of 395 to the north, and really, this has become very useful in monitoring the locations of the crashes and the incidents so we get our freeway service patrol, emergency forces out there to respond to those crashes quickly and clear the traffic.
Okay, we got another question. Mr. Salerno.
I'm sorry, we keep going back on you, but you mentioned signage. I know there's a lot of graffiti on those highway signs. Is there some kind of plan in place to put it? I mean, I know there's no way to stop it.
There are some ideas, and we're going to be asking the design-build team to come up with better solutions. Some of the ideas are, you know, we have maintenance access along those signs. A lot of folks are climbing up onto that maintenance access and using graffiti that all the signs mounted on the bridges, they're getting to those from the bridge structures and climbing around the back of the fence. So we'll be taking the signs off the structures, we'll be taking away a lot of this maintenance access and using some very reflective signing that could actually eliminate the lighting because... Excuse me. We put those, basically the maintenance access up there with the lights shining up on the signs, and if we can get rid of the sign lights that are up there, then the folks doing the graffiti won't have access up there to actually paint those signs. So there's just a couple of ideas, but the design builders may come forward with some other ideas to address that.
Mr. Smith.
Talking about signage, one of the items identified in our brand efforts was the lack of signs indicating you're in Sparks. Are you going to talk to our people and find out what, if we can have some say in some of these signs? I mean, now, if you're going to change them out, now's the perfect time to do that.
This would be the perfect time, and you... City of Sparks and Reno and other agencies will be stakeholders in the project. If you have suggestions like that, you know, we can incorporate them into the contract documents now, or as the design starts to develop, we can make sure that they address... You know, I don't know if you're talking about the blue signs out on the freeway that indicate, but there's a program that we have at Endot where you could... And this would be the time to start a program like that if you're going to start looking at those types of signs.
I think Mr. Erickson's on it.
He usually is. This slide is, and I did want to thank your staff, they've done a great job in bringing this agreement and this information forward quickly. This project has been moving very quickly. In six months, we've come from basically no project to out on the street with an RFP ready to get this project underway. So this is just another slide on ITS, and we're using this, you know, we have our freeway service patrol, we're the move-at-law we're enforcing during construction. And one of the biggest issues on this project is going to be traffic management during construction. I just want to let everyone know that we're going to be on it, so to speak, as far as trying to clear traffic. The signs you brought up, here's a perfect example of the graffiti. We actually took this sign down just the other day, and we're going to be eliminating signs from structure and starting to work on this graffiti problem. Another example of a sign that'll probably be completely redone, you'll have much better visibility on these signs. The text will be easier to read from a greater distance, size is a little bigger. To the next concept, concept four, the eastbound to southbound ramp at the interchange, the system-to-system interchange. This ramp backs up every morning, basically, and we're looking at some restriping and resigning of this section to try to provide a little more storage out there, and hopefully some new ideas come forward with this design build to help it out even a little bit more. Concept five is the widening of Virginia Street. The westbound off-ramp at Virginia Street tends to back up during special events, and during the peak hour, we want to widen that ramp to two lanes. And again, we're looking for ideas from the design builders to make even more improvements, you know, potentially signal timing and some other changes in that interchange area there. Widening of East McCarron Boulevard eastbound off-ramp, looking to provide additional storage here and work with the signal systems and lane configurations in this area to try to improve this area. We also have a storm drain system, concept seven, at a Rob Drive. Every time it rains, basically, you get water on the freeway in this section, it gets, you know, it's a pretty difficult situation, a safety problem out there we need to correct, so we're going to be adding 800 feet, 1,000 feet of storm drain out here and tying it into our system to correct that problem. This, concept eight, is one of our larger elements. This is adding a new loop ramp at Sparks Boulevard, the northbound to westbound movement, and actually restriping the eastbound off-ramp to a three-lane section. We've studied this and looked at some alternatives and found that this really will provide a lot of life for this interchange into the future, and I think it's going to be a great improvement. We're looking forward to your participation in this, this part of the project. In addition to that, the auxiliary lanes from East McCarron to Vista, we'll be adding a lane in each direction. So this is, although there was just a construction project out in this area, and that's kind of the bad news, the good news is, once we finish these lanes, we'll be done for a very long time out here with this, and this will last for a very... This will have a 20-to-30-year life out here with these extra lanes to really help with the weaving and traffic problems in this area. Ten, widen Rock Boulevard eastbound off-ramp, one lane to two-lane exit, change again here, trying to get, you know, additional lane and more storage for that off-ramp. The Rob Drive westbound off-ramp, same thing, one lane now, we want to modify it to a two-lane exit. In addition to those basic concepts, we are going to include landscape and aesthetics along the entire corridor. We do have a fixed budget for that amount, so it's not like we'll be able to do everything as nice as we want to, but there's a $4 million, $3 or $4 million budget that's been established, so we'll be able to do some nice things along the corridor at the high-impact areas to try to, I think, attract more tourists and make it a little nicer through the corridor. Project delivery, again, we're in a design-build contract mode here, so moving very quickly, trying to get these folks on board so they can move forward with these concepts. Looking at $70 to $80 million project, federal, state, and local funding sources, and looking for that innovation in design and construction, and especially traffic management. Schedule's shown here, May 3rd, we issued the RFQ. June 3rd, we basically received the statements and qualifications, and the 17th of June, we shortlisted to five firms, expecting environmental certification. Actually already have it, we're just waiting for the tip-stip changes so that we can get our NEPA document complete. We're issuing the final request for proposals on October 22nd, and the proposals are due actually now in January due to the holidays. We've let it slip a little into January, but we'll be selecting the best value proposal in the January, February timeframe, and the transportation board meeting will be March 15th. Now they've set a date.
Which end of the project are you going to start on first? I'm right here. I'm all around you.
All encompassing.
I'm behind you, too. It did come on kind of loud, didn't it?
It did. It's just your booming voice.
The reconstruction of the pavement is going to drive the construction schedule that will take a longer period of time. We expect... One thing I failed to suggest was we're including an incentive for early provision, so we expect to see the contractor in many places at the same time.
Okay, because that was going to be my next question, because I can't remember how long it was supposed to be for the spaghetti bowl, but it lasted, what, five years? Seems like.
That had to do with the contractor.
Yeah.
So we don't need any action on this, do we? This is just a presentation, then we'll go on to the action items now? Okay. Are you presenting, John, or... Okay, let's move on to 6.5 if there's not any questions, and I see none, okay. 6.5, consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 3188 for support of the Nevada Department of Transportation, I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design/Build Project. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before you is Resolution 3188 for the support of the Design/Build Project. The Nevada Department of Transportation, I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design/Build Project has followed the necessary steps to validate the need for the concept improvements in the project documents to alleviate traffic congestion and improve traffic safety. The developed concepts will in turn provide a benefit to the traveling public within the limits of the project. Staff recommends council adopt the resolution of support.
Questions for John?
Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. John, let's talk about where this money's coming from.
This is just a resolution of support.
That's the next item.
You're just doing a resolution for support?
Yes.
So would you say we support it, then we're going to talk about how much money we give it to?
Yes.
Should we talk about the money first?
Sure, if you want to go into agenda item 6.6, I guess we can do that. I don't see a problem. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead. Let's... Go ahead, let's go right into 6.6, and then we can come, we can vote on that or come back to this one, whatever we want to do.
Item 6.6 is an interlocal cooperative agreement with the Nevada Department of Transportation for the I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design-Bill Project, in which the city will contribute $500,000 of developer funds for the Sparks Boulevard interchange and support the use of $674,080 of FY 2008 Public Land Highway Discretionary Funds at McCarran Boulevard and Vista Boulevard interchanges. Yes.
Questions? Questions? Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go back to the question now. Let's talk about these monies. Let's, first, there's two pots of monies, the $500,000 for the developer fees and $674 from the public lands. So let's talk about the developer fees first. Where were they collected from?
In the staff report, on December 11, 2006, a planned development handbook was approved by council for the legends at Sparks Marina. In the document, the developer was to contribute $500,000 to assist with funding of the Alternatives and Environmental Studies, support long-term improvements of the Sparks Boulevard interchange. So that's where the $500,000 came from.
So these are funds that have already been paid, they're not taxpayer funds, those funds we collected at City Council ahead of the project, and there's no restrictions on those funds to be used as long as they're used in the Sparks Boulevard interchange.
That's correct.
And everybody feels comfortable we're going to spend $500,000 plus without any problem.
I don't seem to think there's going to be any...
I don't think there is. It's probably more of a, just to make sure we're on the record that, you know, it's... So let's talk about the $674 now. This is the first I've ever heard of those funds.
Yeah, in 2008, the City of Sparks submitted for a funding request through the federal appropriations process for both the McCarran Boulevard and Vista Boulevard interchanges. The requested money would go towards project development, environmental studies, and design of improvements to increase capacity and reduce congestion within the corridor. Those monies, when we request them through the federal process, go to the state. And so, really, it's, Endot is responsible for doing the studies and implementing the projects at both McCarran and Vista.
So we don't have control of that money, and we just say that it can be used for this. The money's already in Endot's hands, and again, this is not Sparks taxpayers' funds that are sitting out there for discretionary use for anything.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Indirectly, it's our tax money, isn't it?
Our federal tax money.
Directly.
You're right. I'm sorry, indirectly. So let's go back, then, any other questions on 6.5 or 6.6? Okay, let's go back to 6.5, then, questions. Kerrigan, Mr. Kerrigan.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Resolution 3188.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.5, Resolution 3188. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Oops, wait a minute. Wait a minute here, let me go back, because I didn't...
You need a question?
Yeah, you do. I didn't clear it last time, so you already voted. Let me make sure it's clear. Okay, now, please vote. I didn't want to predetermine your vote there, kids. So that passes unanimously, maybe make sure that I clear that. Okay, 6.6, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement, interlocal cooperative agreement with Nevada Department of Transportation, Endot, for the I-80 Rob Drive to contribute $500,000 of developer funds and authorize to use $674,080 of fiscal year 2008 Public Lands Highway Discretionary Funds. Questions on 6.6? If not, looking for a motion. See if I can file this up. Mr. Salerno?
Move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with the Nevada Department of Transportation for the I-80 Rob Drive to Vista Boulevard Design-Bill Project.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, thanks, gentlemen, appreciate the presentation, appreciate everything, and let's get it on.
Thank you.
Okay, next is 9.1, comments from the City Council and City Manager, Ms. Ratty.
I just wanted to say that we had a very nice event this morning at 11 o'clock that was a kickoff and grand opening of the Victorian Avenue Improvements. I wanted to thank Councilman Smith for pushing that through to the RTC to get the highest quality possible that we could for the City of Sparks. And since Mr. Erickson was here and involved in that early on, the flexibility and the creativity to get that project along Victorian Avenue to be everything that everybody wanted it to be, so thank you both for your extra effort.
Complete street, more coming, right, Ron?
Yep.
Perfect. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an announcement of a commission opening. There is an opening, a vacancy, I'm sorry, on the Sparks Planning Commission for a term that will expire on December 31, 2010. Appointments to the commission are for four years. The selected applicant will complete, will need to complete the term and service for the successive four years. So the council would be asked to look at this particular candidate to fill the remaining portion of this term and then the preceding four years. This person is, would be an excellent addition. Persons interested in serving on the Sparks Planning Commission should complete a community services application available from the Sparks City Clerk's Office here at City Hall. You may also apply online at the city's website, which is www.cityofsparks.us. Simply click on Governing on the webpage, and then click on Boards and Commissions and Get Involved. Then simply click to the Community Services Application. The City of Sparks will receive applications until the close of business on Friday, October 22. Persons with an interest in planning, zoning, should certainly consider this position. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else, discussion, questions? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.